If everyone would please stand and let me pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just about here, back there.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski. Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Ratuia.
Here.
Mrs. Pratt.
Here.
And Mrs. Mackinac.
President, closing.
This evening in closing, the board discussed under negotiations the Sable Education Association's contract under student discipline, give reports forty-six through forty-nine, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, under personnel, the appointments of assistant superintendent, director of special education, director of curriculum instruction, director of technology, and also agenda writing, which there was no discussion. Attorney client privileges, tenure charges against an SCA, a Sable Education Association member, Sable Education Association grievances, and high school midterm exam investigation.
Thank you. Dr. Afan, we have a couple of presentations this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mackinac, would you like to come up? I would like to ask Ms. Bellotti to come up for saving a student's life. It's a resolution. Ms. Bellotti, come on up.
We have a resolution for it. For those of you that may not know, Ms. Bellotti saved a child that was choking in the school. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we have a resolution that we'd like to read. And this is what I always said about teachers. When the last school bus leaves, and the last car leaves, and the doors are shut, the teachers are first responders for anything that may happen in that building. And this is a perfect example of what a teacher has to do. So Sable Board of Resolution two zero one-two dash thirteen dash eleven, whereas the Sable Board of Education employs highly qualified school personnel to ensure the safety of our students and staff. And whereas Mrs. Lori Bellotti is employed by the Sable Board of Education for that purpose as a teacher in a Sable middle school. And whereas it has come to this board's attention that Mrs. Bellotti has gone above and beyond the call of duty. And whereas this Board of Education is truly grateful for quick thinking shown by Mrs. Bellotti in the emergency situation and for her role as protector of one of Sable's most precious resources, the children. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Borough of Sable, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey hereby commends and honors Mrs. Lori Bellotti, Sable middle school teacher, for unselfish dedication to the students of Sable and for quick action to result in the saving of life of one of our students. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution executed by the Superintendent of Schools, President and Business Administrator, Board Secretary, on behalf of the Sable Board of Education be presented to Mrs. Lori Bellotti at the regular meeting of the Sable Board of Education this twenty-sixth day of March, two thousand thirteen.
I hired her twice. She's out doing her husband.
I'd like to call up the two thousand and twelve thirteen state championship bowling team. I also would like to ask Mr. Curry to please come up and give out the award as well as the resolution, and Mr. Eric Block Malloy to assist with this presentation. Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we present this award to the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen bowling team and I read their accomplishments, I'd just like to speak about them as people in our building as well. This is quite an accomplishment what they have obviously done this year. Do I need the mic? Am I loud enough? Can you hear me?
You can't hear on TV.
Yeah, probably. I'm sorry. I just want to say that what's more important is the fact that there are fine young men in our building. And that's going to carry them much longer than their accomplishments in bowling. And they are quite a tremendous amount of accomplishments. Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen state champion bowling program, GMC white division champs with a record of sixteen, zero, and two, GMC conference champs, Westfield Warren Wheeler Memorial Tournament champions, Brick Tournament champions, Joe Romer Memorial Tournament champions, Snowball Classic Tournament champions, Central Jersey Group Three Sectional State champions, Group Three New Jersey State champions, Tournament of Champions winner, and Star Ledger overall number-one ranking and Team of the Year in the State of New Jersey. Team members Jay Suzuski, Home News Bowler of the Year, All-State, All-Area, All-Conference, and All-Division. Mike Bernstein, All-Conference and All-Division. Mike Danchisco. Kevin Netler, All-Division. A.J. Angotti, All-Division. Vito Maniello. Andy Danchisco. Mark Kazinsky. Chris Paulberg. Tyler Santiago. Tyler Jones. Mike Campo. Lucas Leandro. And finally, John Baggert.
We have a resolution on behalf of the Board of Education. And I have to say, it's been a pleasure because I remember this team starting out, and it wasn't even a team. It was only one or two individual bowlers that we sponsored. I even think they paid for their own uniforms at the time. And you've grown into a tremendous powerhouse of bowling, and you've made Sable very proud. And in addition to that, your coach, Coach Winard, is also the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen Coach of the Year. So it truly is a pleasure. And we have a resolution on behalf of the Board. Whereas the Sable Board of Education encourages extracurricular activities for our students, and whereas it has come to this board's attention that the Sable War Memorial High School Bomber Bowling Team had won the Group Three State Champions and Tournament of Champions State Champions this season, and whereas the Board of Education is extremely proud of these student athletes for their dedication and perseverance to excel. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Borough of Sable, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey hereby commends and honors the Sable Bomber Bowling Team for their outstanding accomplishments during this season. And be it further resolved that this Board encourages all student athletes of the Sable Public Schools to follow the example of these remarkable student athletes who strive to be the best that they can be. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution executed by the Superintendent, President, and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, on behalf of the Sable Board of Education be presented to the Sable War Memorial High School Bomber Bowling Team at the regular meeting of the Board of Education this twenty-sixth day of March, two thousand thirteen. Congratulations.
I also want to commend everybody. You guys did a fantastic job. Would you like to say something, the All-American, All-World Bowler?
This gentleman is a very good speaker, so. Good job.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone coming here today to honor this and whatnot. And Mr. Winard obviously can't be here today. You know, he's a fantastic coach regardless of what the newspapers say, you know, the controversy and whatnot. But I mean, it's just been a phenomenal part to be part of this team for the last four years. We were winning the title my freshman year and then the senior year. And to go out on top is just absolutely phenomenal. And I want to thank everybody here, the Board of Education for sponsoring us, and everybody who came out and supported throughout the season and supported all the hardships and whatnot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Good job. Mr. DeAndrea, would you like to come up with the budget presentation? I'm going to spend about ten minutes to go over the budget. This year's budget is a little different than it's been in the past. There's no vote on the budget. This is basically tonight. We will approve a budget by the end of this night. And that's the budget that will be, that we'll use for the two thousand thirteen fourth in school year. There are, there were copies out there. I think I put about thirty of them out. Hopefully you have a copy of the budget presentation. We'll also put this budget presentation up on the website if you need to obviously refresh your memory or you want specifics later on after this is over. Again, if you look over there where the screen is, basically today is called a public hearing. And while we move farther, it's a little difficult to see, but hopefully you have a copy of the budget. The first slide is our normal slide, which is on staffing. We're in the process of hiring seven new staff. This is probably the eighth or ninth year in a row that this Board of Education has added staff to the faculty. And as a result, most districts while they were cutting back, we have been adding staff in the amount of this year, four hundred and ten thousand dollars. Next slide. The only thing we have left to try to figure out tonight is whether or not we're going to do the slower school heating upgrade or whether or not we're going to take that six hundred thousand dollars from capital and we're going to put it into the H-E-H-C and the middle school bathroom. So that is why the budget is not in the consent agenda. It's at the end under discussion so that the board has an opportunity to just discuss that last item and then they'll make a decision on that. There's a few other items on there. Truman School Patio, which is in the front of Truman, which is about thirty grand. The generator at the high school, which obviously you know we need after what we went through this year with Sandy. We want to be able to obviously light more of the building and God forbid if things go down, we can get the refrigeration and not lose food. That's one of the major things that we did there. And as part of security, a hundred thousand dollars is to try to get every building's doors upgraded so that they lock from the inside, just similar to what you have at home. So we're spending a hundred grand, and the board spent a lot of money on that. The next slide is our educational slide, and we're spending close to a million dollars on this slide. Smartboards, we're spending about fifty grand on that, and we're spreading that out among the schools that do not have a proportion of the smartboards. So I believe that's more in the high school and in the middle school. The elementaries are pretty loaded with smartboards. Park is the new assessment that's coming out in a couple of years. And Park, the Park assessment is going to be electronic. So we have to upgrade our technology to make sure that we're able to and capable of running Wi-Fi for every single computer. We have to, the state has asked that we have, I believe it is what, one? For every two students, for every two students, there's one computer. And that's a tall task. We don't have that many right now, so we're trying to catch up and hopefully we'll be ready in a couple of years. New math texts, new social study texts, and new biology. This is pieces of a text. This is not the full series, which you could see K-five, grade six, grade nine. And we're spreading out a bunch of iPads among all the districts, out of all the schools so that each school gets, what was it, Phil's, how many did they get in each school?
The elementary, they got a class size.
Elementary getting class sizes.
High school, they're getting by department.
Grade, right? By department. Each department's getting a block of iPads. So we're spending about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with that. Moving. Moving to the next slide, which is some miscellaneous, which is small in comparison to the full budget. You can read an art kiln, some attire, auto shop tire machine. I'm not sure what that is, but I'm not a good auto shop guy, but they do a good job there. And TV studio equipment, we really need to upgrade. So we're doing about twenty-two thousand there. Next slide is always something interesting, not including special education. As you can see, really, our class sizes have pretty much stayed the same. Last year, the average was twenty-two point eight. This year, it's twenty-two point eight. Some schools went up, some schools went down a little bit. Moving to the next slide, which is our slide on the enrollment. Believe it or not, our enrollment dropped thirty-eight kids from last year. And some of the schools like Eisenhower's dropped about twenty-eight kids. I'm sorry, eighteen children over that period of time. So our enrollment is pretty much stabilized. Not sure when it's going to be next year. Time is only going to tell, so. The next slides. We just got the two thousand twelve thirteen spending guides. If you go to the next thing. So I'm using the eleven twelve. I just received it recently, but I'm going to use the old slides. This is just, as you can see, the State Department, the state districts, the number of students to administrators are almost seventy. We're almost seventy more than the average school in the state. And obviously, that's why we do a good job. We're very efficient. If you look at the number of faculty to administrator, that's just about five. Five faculty to every administrator. We have more. So our administrators are also doing more with less. If you move to the next slide where it says number of students to support services, that's your guidance. And you can see that, you know, our district in fiscal year last year was ninety-two students, ninety-two to one compared to the state, which was seventy-six to one. And the number of students to teachers was one full student. We're one full student more. So you can see that, again, we're a very efficient district. If you move to the next slide, it says that basically the State Department spends almost fourteen thousand dollars a child, and our Sable spends a little over eleven thousand. That's a difference of approximately two thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars per student. If you multiply that by our amount of students, which is five thousand nine hundred and forty, we're approximately below adequacy, over sixteen million, over sixteen and a half million dollars. That's one of the reasons why this year, I believe, we received five hundred thousand more because we are very efficient and that we're not above adequacy. Some districts actually lost eight. This year, we gained five hundred thousand dollars, which really helped with this budget. If you move to the next slide, which he has right there, it sort of breaks it down into instruction, support services, administration, operations and maintenance, and extracurricular. And you'll see that in every category, we're far below the state. If you want to see how we compare as far as per pupil expenditure, I always think this is a good slide because it really gives you an understanding of where we're at in the county. We spend, again, a little over eleven thousand dollars. The average district in the county spends about twelve thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars, which is fifteen hundred and ninety-one more. If you multiply that by the fifty-three hundred, fifty-nine hundred children that we have, we're almost ten million dollars below what the average district in this county spends. That is our size. So I think that is a pretty compelling slide. If you move to the next slide, this is our revenue slide. We are at two percent of the tax levy. That's where we are allowed to be. And you can see that we spend a little over fifty-four million dollars in taxes. If you look at the front balance, once again, we're down to one point six million, which is obviously far less than two percent, which we're holding in front balance. And our front balance, which is our surplus, has really dropped over from last year to this year, over one point two million dollars. The state aid, we received two point four four more. Like I said, we received another five hundred thousand dollars in state aid due to the fact that we were below adequacy. And the rest is self-explanatory. If we look at appropriations, which is the next slide, our appropriations, what we're going to spend next year has dropped in four of the categories. Benefits dropped by about a point. And capital outlay dropped over thirty-six percent. Maintenance of facilities, thirty percent. And utilities dropped about twenty-five percent. That doesn't mean we're not going to spend that, but that's what we're appropriating. And subsequently, the full budget went up about one point six percent from over last year's appropriation, not our expenditure. What does that cost you as a taxpayer? The next slide, it's about seventy-five dollars. Seventy-five dollars for a house that's assessed at a hundred and forty-three and change. If you look at market value of that same house, it's about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in Sable. The next slide, I always like to go back seven years. And you can see back in two thousand and seven and eight, we proposed a budget of a hundred and twenty-two dollars. And the actual means that it was voted on, and guess what? It didn't pass. So the actual budget was considerably lower, and it wound up at about eighty-eight. And if you look all the way down the actual column, you'll see in the last seven years, you'll see eighty-eight, thirty-two, seventy-three, twenty-five, fifty-two, sixty-one, and seventy-five. So we've really kept the tax base very low in the last seven years. We've tried to really keep the budget very efficient and not to overburden the taxpayer. And the last slide is just what we emphasize all the time. We need to keep up with the rest of the districts. And subsequently, I think we do a very good job of that. And I want to obviously compliment the Board of Education and the Finance Committee, and Mr. DeAndrea for putting together a very good budget. Does anybody have any questions about the budget in general? And this has been pretty much standard. What we will do is we will have two more budget presentations. We will meet with the mayor and council. I believe that's April eighth, I believe. We will be meeting with them. And we will be meeting with all the parents at their May, not sure, sixth? It's the first Monday in May. We'll be meeting with all the parents, and that will be when we do our presentation. The faculty and staff, it'll be presented at one of your faculty meetings or department meetings, rather than, you know, me going to each of those schools. The principals will probably give the same sort of little speech. And if you have any questions, you certainly can ask at any of the block meetings or just email me. Thank you very much for listening. We appreciate it.
Dr. Afan.
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeAndrea, could you explain to the public about the hundred and eleven thousand? The state took out the five hundred thousand that we were granted?
Good point, Mr. Bishada. What most people do see is only the amount that the state recognizes saying they gave us an additional five hundred thousand. We've been fortunate over the years through the School Development Authority, we've been applying for our grants. The state has now, what they've done is they've assessed us more or less a fee for using that money. And although we received five hundred thousand dollars additional, the assessment for the School Development Authority went up by a hundred thousand. So the net effect was really only four hundred thousand dollars additional. But it's not only happening in Sable. Anyone who's applied for the School Development Authority funds for their building use, they're now tacking it back on us for using that money that they made available.
I have a question before you go. The seventy-four dollars and fifty-seven cents, I don't see anywhere on here talking about debt service. So I assume that doesn't include the debt service.
That does not include the debt service.
But the debt service went down, right?
Debt service went down because of the refinancing.
Right. So I think it would be helpful if we added that into this box, that dollar amount and the debt service.
That's fine.
We have it covered.
Because in the past, we've never talked to debt service.
But in the past, we had a budget that was, since people have been voting on it.
All right, you want me to add that side?
And I have, we have that.
Okay, no problem.
Because, but that, because that does impact the tax rate.
Sure.
I think in the past, we didn't do it because the voters didn't vote on it. But now, since we've...
Okay, thank you. If you have any questions on the budget, we will open up to the public again, again in the meeting. Under correspondence, everybody received a monthly technology maintenance report or reports. Any questions with those? If not, the minutes were posted for the last two meetings, February nineteenth and March sixth. Anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions of the minutes? If not, I'll accept the motion to file and check the minutes. So move. Roll call voters.
Mr. DePinto second. Mr. Baucka?
Yes.
Mrs. Backa?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Ratuia?
Yes.
Mrs. Pratt?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinac?
Yes. Our student council representative, Tony, what is happening?
Student council has begun to prepare for our Santa Lucia Drug Strip. We are also looking forward to the beginning of our penny wars on RZA. And also after spring break, student council will be holding its annual elections where all students in the school will have the opportunity to vote for next year's executive board. And perhaps student council, I would like to wish everybody safe and relaxing spring break.
Your report, Dr. Afan.
Thank you, Mr. Oh, we have District highlights?
Oh, District highlights. Mr. Sayak, how could I forget?
Samsonell Elementary School is proud to announce that four students were selected to be part of the New Jersey Honor Chorus. The members are Emily Dennis, Rashia Fennel, Glenda Florian, and Michael Maglenickley, Maglenickie. Many students at the upper elementary school tried out for this chorus. Ten students were selected to audition, and the four students listed above were chosen. Congratulations to all. More congratulations to another Samsonell Upper Elementary School student, James Adams. James is a winner in the Elizabeth Town three hundred and fifty logo contest for all students in grades one to five who entered the contest. His entry was selected from over one hundred and sixty students throughout the state, and he received a sixteen gigabyte iPod Touch courtesy of the Elizabeth Town three fifty commission. Well done. The Sable War Memorial High School DECA team has made their way to the national competition in Anaheim, California. Below is a list of our top competitors who placed at the state level and will be attending this competition. Congratulations to the following. Ashley Perez, Accounting Applications, first place. Vikrant Singh, Accounting Applications, second place. Shivam Patel, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, first place. Kushku Jasani and Sonya Parikh, Entrepreneurship Written Event, third place. Monica Torres, CAP and Hotel Lodging and Management, first place. Elise Nikanga, New Jersey State Pin Design, first place. Chris Kong, Hotel Lodging and Management, third place. Katie Hoff and Paige Gallagher, Food for Thought Paper, Gold Level. Other top ten finalists at the State Career Development Conference were Xena Shaw, Accounting Applications Finalists, Pooja Upadhyay, Hotel Lodging and Management Finalists, Malina Das, Restaurant Food Service and Management Finalist, J.C. Holmes, Hospitality and Tourism Professional Design Finalist, Anush Tavar, Principles of Business Management Finalist, Chloe Boyce, Principles of Business and Management Finalist, Jake Azai and Shivam Patel, Sports and Entertainment Operations Research Finalist, Jawad Shah and William Sit, Financial Services Finalist, Mina Said, Human Resources Management Finalist, and Tiffany Ing and Mariam Awon, Buying and Merchandising Operations Research Finalist. Congratulations to all these students. They have worked very hard beyond the regular school day to prepare for these competitive events. Next stop, California. Here we come.
Dr. Afan, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mackinac. Buildings and grounds, there's a band camp use of the buildings and a summer basketball camp, as well as the use of the banner room at the high school and the high school stadium for a football skills camp. Any questions with that? With none, we debate our resolutions, one through eleven, are our regular resolutions. Number twelve is withdrawn. There's a waiver for a Hurricane Sandy victim, transportation waiver. Fourteen is a disposal of equipment. Fifteen is the rejection of the Eisenhower Elementary School project, masonry repair. And that runs that, we rejected, I believe, three companies that the bids were not up to.
Basically rejected too for noncompliance. All the rest were overbid.
Thank you. Sixteen on page six is, there's a bid transportation in and out. Approve the authorization of Mr. DeAndrea to advertise. This is seventeen is the attendance of my conference in Atlantic City. Eighteen is the purchase, the awards and plaques for the graduation scholarship awards. Nineteen is the request to approve a new curriculum, which is required, which is in the preschool handicap program, which is called a mine preschool. the preschool handicap program, which is called the Mine Preschool Curriculum. This is new, five hundred and eight dollars that we are submitting to OLV, which is required. This is part of the funds that come from the federal government. Twenty-one is permission to apply for funds to support learning and volume distributed from Hurricane Sandy in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight, five-seventeen. We're hoping to get that amount back. Mr. DeAndrea has applied for that grant. Any questions with B?
I have questions. And I don't remember, I don't know which number it is because they're different. Coastal Learning Center, what is that?
Oh, that was moved to a different section. We're trying to, that'll be later on for support services.
About how many awards do we give out, and what's the total cost on that?
I don't have that.
Congratulations.
Yes.
I would say, what, twenty to twenty-five? And figure, between plaques and cash awards?
Yeah. Okay. Moving to...
Oh, just sorry. I need to stand on the check for Premier Penny.
And I'm going to stand on item number eight.
Question, number six.
Just want to, Kevin on Premier?
Yep.
Thank you. I don't have that.
Number sixteen, we're advertising for bidding for buses. But later on, section eight, we're awarding a lot of contracts. This is just for the ones that are not being awarded?
Basically, what it is, not all contractors wanted to agree to the CPI that they're allowed to renew at. Some were choosing not to renew. We're not happy with how they performed this year, so that's why you see both.
Mr. DeAndrea, item twenty-one, is that FEMA reimbursement?
No, that's not. That, this is a separate grant that came out from the federal government, where it's specifically geared towards how the learning environment was disrupted for children that were affected. We've already applied for our FEMA application. This is a specific separate grant.
But we did that through the borough.
No, the borough did that, as we already filed our own.
Does FEMA reimburse for transportation?
Excuse me?
Does FEMA reimburse for transportation?
No, they didn't. We did specifically ask. And the one hundred and forty-eight thousand is basically the transportation component for all the displaced students that we had to get them back to their original school. We need section C, personnel non-certified. There are two retirements. I want to wish both Dorothy and Deborah a very happy and healthy retirement. There's also an unpaid medical leave, a few unpaid medical leaves, and a personal leave as well. And then there is a salary adjusted, adjustment, an amended, as noted. And there's a few substitutes that we are approving in that section. Any questions? With none, moving to D. Again, also would like to congratulate Barbara Perillo, a first grade teacher who's been with us for many, many years, and she will be retiring effective July first. We have unpaid medical leave, a slew of grant, the pregnancy leaves, extension of child re-leave, and an amendment to a coaching stipend, a stipend as listed, and professional day approvals on pages nine, ten, eleven, and one on twelve. There's also on number twelve, page twelve, amend the previously certified personnel for SAT prep. That's based on the amount of kids that are in the program. So that's why we adjusted that. As well as to approve retroactively an assistant spring track coach and some coaching aides that are unpaid. There's one individual that is being re-employed. She was working for us and now is taking on another responsibility at the middle school, as well as a substitute list that's listed. Any questions with D? Moving to E, policy. There are two policies, relations with, again, this is the first reading. Second reading will be April ninth. The first reading is relations with vendors. And on page fifteen, the other policy is advertising, sponsoring, and commercial activities that the Policy Committee put into effect. Any questions with section E? With none, moving to curriculum. There's a change, please change. It's hit reports forty-six to forty-nine. Forty-six to forty-nine. Please make that change. This is the district calendar as listed. We will have a prettier calendar that Mr. Mackinon has given to us, and I'm going to try to, you know, mirror what Jackson does, try to make it so that people, it's easy, you can see all the half-days and everything else that's on it. But this is only for the approval of the actual text. Special services, placements, et cetera, are number three on page twenty and twenty-one. New course curriculum as listed on page twenty-one. Number four, retroactive approval of Coastal Learning Center, a student at a cost of twenty-six thousand dollars. This is a placement of a regular student that needed to be placed from another placement. And any questions with that section?
Yes. The Coastal Learning Center is, what kind of school is that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
What kind of school is that?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question. Well, I do know it's a private school placement. We do have disabled children that are going there. But I do know that this child was placed out of district several years ago, not related to an IUP.
Is this retroactive September first, or...?
Yes, it is. There was a mix-up in the paperwork as being placed out. Now that we're going through them, they're asking for payment. We realize we don't have a contract. We've never gotten approval. And the problem came in, it was that it was not special ed kids, so we got lost in the mix because there was no IUP then quite likely. And having a new special ed director who wasn't familiar with the process, it took time to resolve it all.
I'm curious about how many students we have on home instruction. In number, let me see. Number three, E and F. It says five students, and then it says thirty-five students.
Oh, you're talking to E now?
Yeah, I was just curious.
I would say the thirty-five is where we should be. I know we have at least thirty-five.
So we've spent that.
Yeah, it's always been between thirty and fifty.
So should E be taken out?
I don't know what she's referring to. Looks like something was left out. Looks like something was left out of there. If you notice, there's no period at the end, so what I would say we do is withdraw E because we don't really know. I think there's a missing language there. So I'll, we'll draw that for now, and then we can always put it in for the next recording.
So you're just withdrawing the E portion?
Just the E, because F is, seems to, it makes sense. We usually have thirty-five children that are on home instruction.
I have one more question. And I ask this whenever we have, whenever we approve curriculum. What are the changes that realigns it with the new standards?
For which one?
For, well, the marine biology, physics, fourth and fifth grade science.
They have to meet the state standards, and I know that Mrs. Kusinski said they'll be making certain, different changes for, one part comes up for the newer standard. So it has to be tweaked again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to section G, co-curriculum. This is exactly what Mr. Saye had discussed. These are all our youngsters that are moving one and two. They're going to qualify for the DECA conference and competition in California. So we wish them well. Three on page twenty-three is the Serebo Music Department will host a symphonic band invitational on the dates listed. And four, and five, and six are our regular resolutions to approve the summer enrichment program at the SUES, which is a very successful program. Number seven is the approved, the use of the high school band room to practice on the field during the summer months. And they do, they spend a lot of time out there, so I really appreciate what they do and all the hard work. The auto shop is, has a auto tech club, and they are requesting the, an annual fundraiser for a young lady, an eleven-year-old girl who's something from lymphoma. The annual SAD National Conference is listed at number nine. The change of the Powderpuff Football, I think it's been changed about five times, is from Thursday to Tuesday, May twenty-first. The Wilson Elementary School will hold its talent show and Battle of the Books. And the recital for the high school. Music Honors Society is noted. And approval of Truman Elementary School will hold its course show and Spanish Fiesta. Any questions with that section?
I have another question.
Sure.
Why, and I might be reading this wrong, but it looks like we're paying for some of the students to go to California and not all, and I'm wondering why we're...
Mr. DeAndrea, would you like to answer that question? Because I'll most likely mess it up. So I'm going to ask Mr. DeAndrea.
I do believe I saw Mr. Preston here, in case I get it wrong. What we've done is to establish what's been now become the practice is that the resolution is reading, the difference is that the ones that show that the board is paying the full cost are those children or students that were eligible right from the beginning, or they met all the criteria. The ones that are not became eligible because others could not go. So we've now separated the two resolutions so that it's clear for the board that those that were eligible versus those who became eligible.
So the first four on the top did not qualify outright?
Outright, correct.
You were paying the registration fee.
And then the rest were, and that's been the procedure that we've used, I believe, Mr. Preston, the last two years now. And hopefully that will get the other groups to follow that same protocol versus the outright when those are qualified versus the ones that became eligible.
Thank you.
So that the board is clear.
Moving to section H, support services, leaving the transportation, transportation routes Approval shuttle bus for the temple. Some, a retroactive trip as listed, young women's conference. There's a change of the date of the trip. And there are seven approvals of trips also listed. I also are asking for approval of an extracurricula. I received just before I came here from Katie Couric, believe it or not, that Sheila Berman has been selected by a student that has made a difference in that individual's life. And Katie Couric would like to interview her on, let me check the date, April fifth, Friday. So I'm requesting that the board allow that to happen. I don't see why we wouldn't. And I think that should be pretty interesting. I just got it, so I didn't speak to Jim. I only got it, you know, right before I left. So I'm going to add that in for, let's say, right at the end of this section, which would be number ten. Number nine is the use of the board buses to transport third graders to their orientation at the SUES. Mr. Mackinon, that concludes my reading.
Any board discussion on agenda items for open up the public? Mr. Mackinon? Mr. Bishad?
Mr. DeAndrea, page twenty-seven, number five. I'll be voting no on the Board of Education request to approve of board buses on Saturday the thirtieth. I brought this up on the February thirteenth meeting. I think what we're doing is, board, we're allowing ourselves to be open to litigation if one of these people gets hurt on our buses. We don't use any other of our buses for any other religious service that I know of in this town. Again, it's a liability issue. I think if one person got hurt, the board is subjected to a multiple, multiple lawsuit, meaning dollars, of course. So I will be voting no on this.
Do we require that the temple do have, provide insurance?
Yes, they require that they're insured.
Any, Mr. Saye?
Yeah, Dr. O'Fannan, you mentioned the Powderpuff Football Game at the high school. I noticed when the calendar came out from Angela Jones that there is not one event at the high school listed on the calendar. And as I flip back through March and February and January, we've got events for every school but the high school. Could we get the high school's events, like the Powderpuff Football Game, the proms, whatever they're doing, on the calendar as well?
I'll see what happens.
All right, thank you.
Now, seeing any other questions this time, I go with the public. Any questions, comments you may have on the agenda items only. I will open up again to the public, any business they may have come before this board. Any questions, comments on agenda items?
Barbara Kilcom, Barbara Kilcom, it's twenty-two Schmitz Street. I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Bishada. Last year, I happened to be going by the school, and I noticed that all the parking, they parked all over the lawn in the middle school and in different sections. And these were people from the temple. I also observed a woman pushing a baby carriage and walking near, it was Washington Road by Burks Park, almost got hit by a car and approaching and going to the buses. And I think it's really a liability. And I'd just like to know, Mr. DeAndrea, did you ever see the insurance policy? Do they give you a copy of the insurance policy that they have?
That's all handled by my transportation department. I have not seen if they handle all of that requirement.
So our transportation department, I mean, because I think we're setting ourselves up with a huge liability. It has, the traffic has increased, the amount attending have increased. That's why I see them parking all over our lawns. And I don't know who's checking this. I mean, it's a liability to us, as taxpayers. And it's abuse of our property also to be parking all over the lawn. And I don't think it's monitored. I don't know, it's not well lit. I asked the police department, apparently there are patrols, but not enough. They sent one person, and they're parking Burks Park Middle School, High School. And for our bus drivers and all, I think I would second guess this, or I would really take it under consideration because you're setting it up for a total liability for all the residents.
Anyone else in the public? Seeing none at this time, I'll close it to the public, and I'll entertain a motion to accept and file student attendance report.
Someone?
Need a second?
Mrs. DePinto.
Okay. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Baucka?
I'm also voting no on number four, uh, number five on page twenty-seven. I abstain, yeah. I abstain on number eight. Yes, I'm all right.
Thank you. Mrs. Backa?
Yes, except for number five on page twenty-seven.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes, it's so noted, please.
Mr. Saye?
Yes, with the one extension noted.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Strabber?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Mrs. Saye, tell it to the New Jersey School Board Association.
I spoke to Mr. Mackinon. I returned from my trip to Finland. It was definitely a very interesting trip, seeing another school system, particularly in a completely different culture and a different economic culture as well. Mr. Mackinon suggested that I give a full report with a presentation at our next meeting, so I'll be doing that. The other piece that I'll mention on the national level is NSBA has secured sponsorship for a bill that will significantly restrict the role of the Commissioner of Education. So I'll be bringing more information to the, to the board regarding that bill and seeking us to adopt the resolution supporting it. And that concludes my report for today.
Thank you. We have any committee reports, any committees meeting that I know about?
Yes.
The joint, there was a joint meeting between the finance and buildings and grounds, and I'm not sure if you just want to hold that for your discussion on the budget.
Yeah, I think that's going to fall into the discussion.
And policy also met, but the... And policy also met, but the output was on the agenda.
Okay, discussion. Who wants to take it, Mr. DeAndrea?
I'll start. Just for the board to understand, there was a joint meeting between the Buildings and Grounds Committee and the Finance. Rest assured, there were not more than five members there, so there was not a quorum. I know that question was asked. The reason this evening the changes do not appear as part of the presentation was that nine board members already voted on a budget, so the authority did not mesh with the committee to make those changes, and that's why this was moved to a discussion item this evening, because nine members voted on a budget, so any changes to that budget has to be done at this point by the board. And the main, the main thing, I believe, for discussion, 'cause I did not hear from anyone else about the $4,000, is the changes to the capital projects, which is gonna be required to be voted on tonight, so I can make those amendments to the budget that's submitted to the county. So with that, I'll turn it over to, if the Buildings and Grounds wants to start with the rationale behind making those changes, and I know was supported by the Finance Committee also, so that's why it's here, just wanted everyone to understand why the changes were not made.
What happened is on Tuesday, the, I requested and had a board meeting, both Finance and those four of us, Finance and the Buildings and Grounds, did a little bit of review work and came up with the, I, we, we have to fix what we have right now. The, the heating system in Slover, I think, is not a priority, because the way our student enrollment is right now, that school doesn't have to be opened. The second issue that comes up is that Mr. Syak had brought up several years ago, and he's mentioned it several times, about having a, a plan of capital improvements. Well, the capital improvements that would have been going into this budget this year, which we don't have the money for, was to put a roof on Truman. That was, and we're going to work our way, doing the infrastructure with, the next year would have been probably the L Wing here at the high school and the second gymnasium roof over here. But what happened is, over a period of time, we've had a chance, we reviewed the middle school, and the bathrooms are really not in that great of shape. There's eight of them in the D Wing that really totally need renovation and rebuilding. The other issue that I, I studied was, and I conferred with the committee, both Finance and, and the Buildings and Grounds, was the old section of Arlet has twenty-six univents in there that aren't really functioning properly. For the public's information, univent is, what they do is they allow heat to come into the classroom, and then they'll shut off and allow fresh air to come in, so we don't wind up with a stagnant type of atmosphere where students are going to fall asleep. And the Arlet system was one of the projects that we had discussed years ago with our architect, and we've, it, it's something that has to be done for these students. Mrs. Batto made a comment at the meeting, which I think is true, we have to take care of our students and children in the schools that are in there before we worry about tackling and, and building or adding into the heating system at Slover. We, we've set a precedent that we wanted to do maintenance in-house in our buildings, and I think this is a very good example of improving classrooms and facilities for our students and children that are in the schools right now. Anybody else from the committee would like to speak about it? Dan, you took care of the finance unit director.
Back when we did the middle school, the univentilators in the D Wing, it was just chose, we were told to either middle school or Arlet, so we chose middle school, so Arlet would be the next logical choice, because we easily chose Arlet last year and chose for middle school this year. That was Dennis's recommendation too, was to go with the univentilators, if a school is being utilized with students, rather than putting heating system in a school that may or may not have soon as it next year.
How much, Mr. DeAndrea, did we already put into Slover? We already did half the building, heating, and we put the wireless?
Well, the wireless was district-wide.
Okay.
I don't have a value, I don't recall. If I'm correct, we spent about a hundred and ninety to two hundred thousand dollars on the one side of the building for the heating system.
And what we were gonna do this year? We're gonna finish the heating system?
To the opposite side of the building. I, I call it the, more or less the superintendent's side versus the business office side. That's how I refer to it. But that, that is a bigger scope of work, because you cannot just replace the univentilators on that side. It's a steam system, so that requires a boiler also, that's why required additional funds.
Why is this being discussed now and not put into the budget initially four months ago?
Which item?
The, um, high school, the change.
I, I have to leave that to the committee. I know that I put in what I thought was the direction at the time to get Slover ready.
Which one, which was?
So I have, I have to leave that to the committee members to discuss that.
Mr. McEnon, as you know, we all have our lives outside. Sometimes it takes a little bit more time to review what's going on. That's one of the issues that I, I took, I started reviewing things and looking at records that I had at home pertaining to capital projects that could be done within the district. And if you're going to, what, one of the other issues is that the members of both Finance and Buildings and Grounds toured Slover, and believe me, there's a lot more work that has to be done than just putting the heating system in to open at school. The basement has to be totally rebuilt, the kitchen has to be rebuilt, the gymnasium slash auditorium, there's a lot of work that has to be done in that building before it could be acceptable for students to be in there. So, and again, our enrollment is stabilized, and looking at the fact that we have extra space within the district of other school facilities that can take additional students, the committee felt that it would be the best thing to do is upgrade the facilities where students are involved daily.
Do we have any money in the budget for all the work at Slover? For the, yeah, was it all taken out, or is there anything left there?
This money is taken out.
That was all, it was in there. That was all, it was only.
So everything's, well, there was only one thing in there.
It was seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
It was, it's a, it's a wash. The Arlet heat had been discussed for years, and we actually always seemed to never get to it because of the price. This price is lower because Dennis thinks he could do a lot of the work in-house, so this number has come down. But the Arlet heating has been something that's been, we've been talking about since I've been here, as well as the bathrooms, so.
How much does the Arlet cost?
As an example.
It costs four hundred?
We're estimating four hundred thousand based on the pricing that we got on the univentilators for the Slover school, similar type that we're replacing out. And two hundred thousand dollars was gonna be for bathroom renovations, again, in-house, strictly buying all the material and doing the work in-house.
I, I understand, I, I understand the logic, but for the last couple of years, we've been talking about getting Slover back on board, and the plan was, every year, try to put a couple hundred thousand dollars into that, to make that happen. The overcrowding issue, the only way that, the overcrowding issue is gonna be relieved at Isak, Slover is gonna factor into that. Last board meeting, I, I briefed this chart that I got at the planning board meeting that I sit on about the point. The two thousand units, they changed the configuration of the bedrooms. Initially, those were all one and two bedrooms, they changed the configuration to add four hundred ninety-four three bedrooms, which their study and our, and the borough's planner study estimates anywhere between three and four hundred additional school-aged children from that project. That combined with the fact that Town Lake still has another hundred houses to be built, and there's still Section 5A and 6 in Lemire that's not built. So somewhere down the road, Slover is going to need to be open. When we look at the master plan, we just finished revising the master plan for the borough as well. If you look at Wilson, a school that was nestled into a neighborhood, Truman, Slover is the same way. I, I think there's something to be said about community schools, I think people like community schools. And if we're ever gonna open up Slover, we need to continue to fund that piecemeal as we go along. Because everybody in this room, on this table knows that if we don't fund it now, we're not gonna fund it, and then that's gonna become a problem, and it's gonna become a problem. No matter what the configuration down the road is in the elementary schools, Slover is going to be a factor. And the longer we delay that, I, I think, you know, the more expensive it's gonna be, and we're gonna run out of altitude, and there's gonna be pretty quick on it. I would propose that if that's what we want to do, is that we can keep four hundred thousand in Slover, try to finish that other part, and then do the bathrooms in the middle school.
Unfortunately, Mike, the Slover school cannot be broken up in that way. The problem comes in is, in order to do Slover, it has to be univentilators and boiler, because that side, it's, it's a steam system that we have to convert over to a water system, so it has to be all in one conclusive piece.
Mr. McEnon, I, I agree with you. The problem, as I see it, is I don't think the board is completely on that same page. And Mr. Bafta, Mr. Bishata, correct me if I'm wrong, from your perspective, I don't think you see Slover opening in the next five years. If anything, you see us going to a K-five structure with the U E S being nine hundred or a thousand doors. So that's why we don't wanna do this right now. Would that, would that be a fair statement?
Well, I think one of the other problems is, I think when we toured it, the Buildings and Grounds, if you look downstairs, I think the scope of fixing Slover is, is bigger than we probably originally anticipated. I'm not so sure that you might not end up with a large expense to fix that, where you took it maybe referendum, or maybe the money you get from the point that might be there to fix it. So I think the, the logic, it got to be, since we, we don't have a plan and we don't have a timeframe, we sort of felt it's best to fix the schools that are students populated. This is, you know, we have a long list that we've been talking about for years of, of the other schools, and Dennis felt like, and the Truman group was discussed too, and Dennis felt these were more important than the Truman group, that the Truman group could make it as we've done the groups. But I, I think the magnitude maybe of the work at Slover is, is bigger than, than we anticipated.
Are we still, Dr. Afana, are we still looking at 2015 September to get students in there?
I vote it's 2014.
No, I don't think it was 2014 or less, we mean, it was 2014.
Well, that was the debate.
No, yeah, it was 2014.
Always 2014.
2014.
Whether, whether or not you wanna open it or you don't, that was the original plan, was to open up Slover in 2014 September.
How many classrooms you already have in there? I saw two the other day. How many total are renovated or painted?
We'll have nine, hopefully by the end of the summer, nine totally renovated.
But downstairs in the first room on the right, there's an inch of water, sitting in the room with boxes of papers floating in them. I mean, it's.
In the basement at Slover?
Right across from the gym. And then, I mean, the walls down, the basements are just falling apart as we speak.
But I, but I guess that, that's up to the board. If, if we wanna open that building, whether it be 2015, 2016, 2017, then we need to start appropriating money towards it. If we're not going to open it, then we should definitely put the money over at Arlet and the middle school. But I, I, I don't know how, we, we need to reach that decision, and I'm not even sure if that necessarily is contingent upon K-three or K-five.
I don't, I don't think it is any.
Mr. McEnon? Because we could, we could be a K-five district and still have Slover open, alleviating some of the size of the U E S. So we might be able to make that decision sooner than the K-three, K-five, and decide where we wanna go with it.
Right, and, and if they're, if the board makes a decision on the year they're opening the school, I think that would help the Buildings and Grounds, but since there is no decision.
Whatever the great configuration is, Slover is needed. That, that's the, that's the reality.
So are the univentilators in bathrooms in the middle school and Arlet?
I, I hear you.
Did, did you say that Dennis had said that he prefers having the Arlet done before the Slover?
Before Slover.
Before Slover?
Before Slover and before the Isak.
Before Truman.
Before the roof.
But before Slover.
Because there's no direction on what to do almost. Many of us are the same boat with it.
Right, is that what you?
There's no direction on what we're doing at Slover.
I mean, again, the reason Slover was selected was, at one point in time, the belief was that we were starting to put money into that building to open it up to hopefully be a school. That's why the six hundred thousand dollars was put in there for the univentilators.
And that was agreed with by everyone.
Again, I'm not gonna disagree. It's been in the budget, and the discussion is here that apparently there are a change of feelings on that, and I, I just need to know the direction from the board as to what is the direction.
Right, and one of my concerns is, if we do move the money to Arlet and, and middle school, and the following year is, is gonna be another school, like Truman with the roof, and whatever other schools, so will we ever, will we ever say, yeah, let's put the money to Slover? It kinda sounds like we're just gonna put it off forever.
Board decision, folks. I, I really can't help more than, than that.
Well, the putting off has always been a problem here, we've never just had enough money. These have been put off, I think, this Arlet, since I've been here, has been put off. Like I said, I think, but the original price we had was like seven fifty?
Nine sixty was the original price. We can do it in-house cheap. But, well, it, it's my recommendation that we leave the money in Slover and continue in that direction, but let's go down the line. Beth?
I am all for opening Slover, but I am against taking money out of buildings where children are that need it, and if it's Dennis's reputation also, I'm leaving the money in Arlet and, and the middle school.
Dan, now I think, nope. Jill?
I will postpone the Slover and put the money into Arlet and the middle school.
Kim?
I think we gotta get Slover open.
I think that we put the money where the kids are now. I, I was at the meeting.
You got your direction. Put the money into Arlet and to the middle school.
What I'll do is, if the board doesn't have, just allow me a few minutes to rewrite it.
Well, before you, before you do that, we also have this, the scouting issue.
And then you also, I was just gonna say, you also have the other change of four thousand dollars being removed from the line item for scouting and placing the four thousand dollars into line item for maintenance supplies. So the board can have that, and I'll.
Do we know if the scouting is currently occurring?
Yes, it is.
What are we talking about? That's what I thought. Talking about football scouting?
Football, I know, sports as well. Sports scouting.
It's not just football, it's other sports.
Sports scouting.
Basketball, I'm sure it's baseball.
I'm, I'm for leaving that in, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'm for leaving that in as it is.
How much of the four thousand do we actually use?
I don't know that. I don't know. That was a number of, I apologize.
Is Jake, is he still here?
I'll start on this end, Tom. I'm on the Finance Committee with the recommendation was to take the scouting out. Helen?
How much do we actually use of it? We use all of it, or?
I'm gonna tell you, based on what I've seen, probably a big portion of it is used.
And out of, is this eliminating it completely?
Yes, it's removing the line item completely, the four thousand dollars.
Can they continue to do it with other, other parts of the budget, other?
My, and this is a, a question that was asked, since it is a specific line item that's called scouting, and the committee recommended removing the line item scouting, my, the way I would follow through is that that, that amount is eliminated and the purpose is also eliminated, since it was segregated in that manner.
Maybe I should reword that. If a coach wanted to go to visit another team, another school and scout, is, they're still permitted to do that, even though we don't have that in the budget?
Without payment, yes.
I thought we removed it last year, the words. We did, but then we put it back.
What occurred last year?
You didn't put the word back.
Last year, what occurred was four thousand dollars was allowed, removed at the discretion of the supervisor.
They were allowed to do it at the discretion of the supervisor, with the four thousand dollars allocated.
Right. Four thousand dollars was removed, and it was at the discretion of the supervisor as to how he was gonna remove the four thousand. So if he wished to use four thousand for scouting or whatever portion, he was allowed to.
So the four thousand was put into a general fund, that he could use it anywhere?
No, it was removed from his budget. He had it covered within his budget.
Removed from his budget, and if he defined other areas to support scouting, he was allowed to do that. It was left at his discretion as to how to use the dollar amount that was allocated.
So that's what we did this past year?
That was in the, what I had in my notes also.
Okay. Right, so the word was removed last year?
No. The four thousand dollars, if he had eighty-five thousand dollars, it was reduced to eighty-one thousand, but he was allowed to make the adjustments to his budget as he saw fit, to spend only the eighty-one thousand. So scouting was basically still in there, he just had a pool of money, less than what the line item originally had.
He could borrow from somewhere else.
Right.
So then how did it come back this year?
He put it back in the budget for the full amount.
Helen, we're on you.
It, it's only four thousand dollars, I don't think it's a big deal.
It's only $4,000, I don't think it's a big deal.
So is that an in or an out?
That's fine, that's fine, leave it in.
Leave it in.
I say keep it the way it was as current here, so take it out.
Say in or out. It eliminates the confusion.
Leave the $4,000 in?
No, I said take it out. Just like we did this past year.
Well, I think we don't, we go through this. The most, the discussion right now is to leave the $4,000 for scouting, and that's the consent, because I know what you're saying, but that's not the discussion.
Let's take that for first, in or out, and we can always modify the second thing.
Okay, take it out.
Reduce the scouting by $4,000.
Dan, who now?
Out.
Okay.
So it's out?
So the $5,000...
It's an $80 million budget, we take the $4,000 out of the scouting program, which, based on my observation, has served us pretty well in our sports programs over the last year. Testament was tonight, but three P, some things just have to make me wonder what the heck we're doing.
So before...
I say leave it in.
So is it in or out?
It's out.
It's out. Now, does the board wish to allow JK to do scouting within his budget if he can afford it? Anyone opposed to that?
Let me, let JK figure that out.
Yeah, but the board has to give, no, the board needs to give specific direction on that.
The first correction is clearly to remove $4,000 from scouting, which basically means scouting is not permitted, the way I'm looking at it.
Correct.
Because it would be deleted from the budget line item for scouting, so...
Why do we want to do this?
Wait, 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 like, so when it finished, so...
What Mr. Syak is proposing is still reduce the line item by $4,000, but if Mr. Koetanich can still support scouting, he's still permitted to do so as he was for this year.
Right, so then we would be mirroring last year, this year, is what you're asking?
Yes.
So I think what Mr. Syak is...
The $4,000 gets transferred, but you permit him to do what he can if he can.
Within his own line item.
Right.
Anyone opposed to that?
Does everybody understand what we're doing?
Yeah.
We'll start with Mr. Bishada at that end.
Yes.
Fine, yes.
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 Okay, so Mr. Koetanich will be allowed to pay for scouting, he just has $4,000 less...
To do it with.
To do it with, in his total budget line item.
Correct.
We're all clear with that?
Same as this issue.
Same as this issue, I'll try to do the wording. So, the budget resolution will basically read the same, except for paragraph three, where it will read, "The 2013-14 budget included, includes a withdrawal from capital reserve in the amount of $750,000 for Arlet heating upgrades, interior door lock replacement, Truman School front patio concrete replacement, middle school bathroom renovation, and apparently I missed one, the high school generator upgrade."
Which is not a change, just an notice.
It's a notice.
Want to make that clear?
I make a motion, will you approve, or do we need to open it public?
Is any other discussion called up to public?
I'd like to congratulate the high school art department, they put on a wonderful show last night. Our students are incredibly talented, and it was a very nice show.
At this time, I'd like to open it to the public, if any visitor may come forward to the board. Do you have any questions, comments about what you just witnessed? You can come onto the microphone, please state your name and address of the record.
I think you missed not to comment on this.
And I would be disappointed.
I was hoping you would have mercy on us.
Director Hillcomis, it amazes me, you know, I'd like to know what happened to the old common sense, because, I mean, you're elected, you're appeared to make decisions financially, put the money where the kids are, fix what you have, fix the children, I mean, the bathrooms, the roofs, and if you let it go, like Mr. Syak, I recall you said you wanted a five-year plan, way back when it cost us so much money to fix the middle school, when you, people, students are tripping over buckets and all in the rains, and they have to run and cover all the equipment with plastic. We got to that point. Don't let it get to the same point with the other children's schools, I mean, with Truman, whatever, Arlet. Fix what you have, because it's going to end up costing you double in the end. And when the point is built, I'm sure Mr. O'Neill promised, what, 19 million?
I don't even know if that's on the table.
Whatever. Then, fix Slover and open it up. But I have another question. What happened to K through 5? Our upper elementary is, was what, a pilot program? We don't have that many in the state, and we have another elementary school with loads of empty classrooms. What happened to K through 5? All the parents were agreeable to this, maps were drawn, all the parents seemed to be okay with it, and then all of a sudden, what? The administration didn't want it? The principals didn't want it? That shouldn't be. This is a parent decision, this is a taxpayer's decision, not an administrative decision.
Mrs. Hillcomis, always looking forward to your lectures.
But it's the truth, it's common sense.
You have to understand, and, well, you want to talk about common sense. First of all, you have to disassociate K through 5 and overcrowding, these are two separate issues. And the last thing that we are going to do is change a elementary...
But excuse me, you said, wait, wait, go back. You said it's not an overcrowded K through 5 and...
I never learned something when I was talking. Listen, if you, any configuration...
I just want you to repeat what you said, because I thought I missed hearing.
Grade configuration, whether you stay K-3 or K-5, is separate from overcrowding. If you're going to change a educational philosophy in a school district, let it be on educational reasons. There are other ways to deal with overcrowding right now. You can use your borders, you can put more kids and all that, and that's what we're going to wind up doing. But if my memory serves me correctly, I remember one of your prior lectures, maybe about two years ago, when you came up and you berated the administration and the board, when we took the preschool handicap out of Slover, that we should have students in there, we're going to lose that school, it's going to lose its certification, and you mentioned the other schools that just happened in the district years ago. And that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to put kids back in that school district, that would do, that building, that would be one of two things.
Excuse me, don't we have students in that school right now?
No, we don't.
Well, they have the...
Well, we have to, but not, but that's the...
It's not...
It's the tuition base.
It's a tuition, I prefer to call it more of a daycare center, where it's not an educational center.
So we have to get rid of the K-5 thought and overcrowding.
You should have kept them there, I was right.
We have a school sitting in a neighborhood, if you talk to people that are around that school, and you ask them, would you like your kids to go to the school, they say absolutely. That's an asset in the district, and we ought to utilize it, it's just common sense to do that. And if we wait until the point is up and running, and we have this overcrowding problem, and we don't have Slover prepared, I wonder who will come up to the microphone and berate us about that? I'm just curious.
Oh, I'm sure I would.
Exactly.
I wouldn't want to disappoint you.
Any other questions?
No, but you do have to fix where the students are right now.
And we understand that.
And I think that's important.
We don't get the impression that the heat's not...
And utilize the empty classrooms that you have in schools, thank you.
We have a lot of them in Slover. Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Seeing none, I'd like to take a motion for...[1768.12]